Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of July 12, 2022. Let the record show that we started promptly at 5:34 pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20, until July 15, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in that order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203-386-491-POUND, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as is possible. And good evening, everyone. We have a good crowd here tonight. I understand we have some awards coming your way, so let's get right at it. First, the first order of business will be the roll call, and I'll go down. Select Minister Castro, nice to see you back. Welcome.
You're nice to be back. President.
Yes, Ms. Davis.
President.
Mr. Shell.
President.
Mr. Metters.
President.
And the Chair is present as well. First order of business is the minutes of June 28, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any edits, comments, suggestions? Mr. Shell?
One tiny edit on page two in the top paragraph, the penultimate line where it says, "They offered their condolences to his." The word "family" is missing.
Gotcha. Important, yeah. Good get. Anybody else? Okay, hearing, seeing none. A vote here. Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. De Castro.
Abstain.
Abstain, and the Chair says aye. Thank you very, very much. Public announcements. Any public announcements from folks here at present, that are present here? Any, any public announcements from anybody on, on camera, on the virtual world here? I see none. Agenda item requests. Mr. De Castro, and then we'll go to the, go to the public.
Are you gonna, I have... Sorry. I have both, actually, so I...
Okay, public announcement. Go ahead.
You wanted to conclude the public...
Public announcement.
First.
Yep.
Okay. First of all, I have several. With respect to the recent open meeting law decision by the Attorney General that was reported in the Chronicle, I wanted to point out for the information of the public that the motion that was offered to go into executive session, which specified the matters for which we went into executive session, was offered in reliance on the advice of Town Council. I had noticed that the posting of the meeting was nonspecific, and I brought that to the attention of the Town Manager. She may have already been aware of it. I can't remember, and she conferred with Town Council, so we got that advice. Secondly, there was some guidance given in that opinion by the Attorney General about the periodic review of executive session minutes. I know we have scheduled on future agendas for a review in September, and I would like to see the board review them quarterly, which was one of the recommendations in that. So I hope we can do that on a periodic basis. Thirdly, an agenda item request at the request of the Chair of the Council on Aging. They are involved in a, an examination of a rebranding of the senior center, for which the public will be getting more information in the coming weeks. There'll be a poll feature on the town website about that. They expect to have that process completed with a recommendation to the Select Board in September, and they've requested that we agenda that at our September 13 meeting. So if that's possible, I'd like to put that forward. And lastly, I had occasion yesterday as liaison to the Railroad Museum Group to attend the annual photo and luncheon, and I just really wanted to call to the attention of the public, the beautiful condition that that museum is in. It's been recently painted. It's nicely landscaped, and I thank the Railroad Museum Group as well as the town staff for the work that they've done. And I also want to note the collaboration that they are undertaking with the Eldridge Public Library on a children's program this summer focused on trains. So it's for adults as well as kids, so it's a, it's a good take, and it's free. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. De Castro. So we've logged that agenda item request. Please, Alec and Jill will make sure we get back to that. Any other agenda item requests from the public that are here presently and present, or anybody from the public with an agenda item request that is online? Seeing, hearing none. We'll get on to business here. We, our new business this evening is the awarding of the Independence Day awards. Look forward to that. We have a drinking water update from Mr. Temple, and then we have an Eversource update from Runet Goldstein, who's from Eversource, who's here present this evening. And if need be, if desire, we will allow public comment on those three items this evening, okay? So first up is Justin Bohannon. Please, Justin, come forward and spin your magic. I, just my personal opinion, it was a wonderful parade, well-attended. It was a huge crowds, lots of energy, really a lot of, really a lot of fun. So appreciate, certainly appreciate your work and the work of your committee. You did a hell of a job. Great job.
Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone for making it a wonderful parade. You know, our, you know, we had the parade last year. It was kind of a shortened parade. We didn't have as many entries, but this year we were back closer to what we normally have, and certainly looking around, the crowds were back to normal, and it was just a wonderful time, and we missed you, Mr. De Castro.
I watched it on video.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight to present the awards. So we'll start with the most environmentally conscious entry, and that goes to the Stage Harbor Yacht Club. Next up is the best use of technology, and that goes to the Cape Cod Power Squadron.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is our funniest entry, and that goes to Depot Dogs. Yes, no one here. Best civic entry goes to the Rotary Club of Chatham. The most patriotic entry goes to the Kenny Owens Memorial Cup. Best youth entry goes to Exit Merch. And best family entry goes to the Fitzgerald family. And now for our top three overall entries. Overall, third place goes to Chatham Bar's Inn. Overall, second place goes to the Montomoa Yacht Club. And overall, first place for the seventh time in the last 10 parades is the Phillips Farm family.
Facing the wrong way.
That's all right. All right. You guys are rock stars. I have a before and after photo.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
We, we just want to thank all of the entrants, all the people who came to the parade for making it a wonderful day. On behalf of the committee, I want to specifically thank both former Police Chief Mark Paulina and new Police Chief Mike Anderson. As you can imagine, having the cooperation of a police chief is very important to running this parade, and with Chief Paulina retiring on July 1, and the parade being on July 4, the two of them worked greatly with us, and it was a smooth transition, and, and then we're looking forward to working more with Chief Anderson moving forward. And thank you also to Selectman Metters for all of his help throughout the year.
You bet. Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Corey. Thank you. Sure, go ahead, Corey.
No, Justin, I want to thank you guys, the entire Independence Day Parade Committee for the efforts they put into it. There's a lot of planning on this. I mean, you, you guys got it down to a science. I mean, you got, the, you know, past parade committees have kind of got a system put together. You guys have followed through with it, and you've had to navigate a couple tough years, but I commend you for all the efforts that you guys put into this, and look forward to next year.
Thank you. Super job. Thank you. Freeman would be happy. He'd be proud. Okay. Thanks to everyone. The next item on our agenda is a drinking water update, drinking water wells, PFAS, and testing and pumping update, and we have Mr. Temple. I see him online, and Tom, take it away. Let the room clear a little bit, Tom. It's a little noisy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Select Board. Good evening. My name is Tom Temple, Director of Public Works. Just to give a quick update and overview of the agenda item that's before you, Well 4 is operating with the rest of our wells at approximately 15 hours a day. We're pumping 600 gallons per minute into our water distribution system. Well 4 was sampled on July 7. We're waiting for results for that. Well 5, we're, as far as progress goes, the TIG company, the people extended their vessel warranty to 36 months as you see in the report. You know, we had the damage when it fell off one of the loading during the loading process for delivery. It was only a one-year guarantee. They boosted it to a 36. It went through all kinds of testing. They did an incident report. They followed through with all the necessary paperwork, and they have increased that. It also gave us a warranty which is attached with the agenda. They also gave, the TIG company gave us four spare vessels for ruptures for the discs for the water department. They have custody of those right now. The PFAS being in our distribution system right now for Well 5. The filter system is operating currently. We took the samples for Well 5 also on July 7, and as far as the permanent treatment facility, Mass DEP approved the pilot study on June 8, and Blue Leaf had conducted the pilot program between June 13 and the 24th. The, the study sought to evaluate the performance of green sand filter filtration and through, it's followed through the GAC vessels for the PFAS removal. The also, the water treatment, the water treatment plan is at 60% submittal for the deadline, was extended to August. We're waiting for those plans to come through. We'll take our look and review when they do reach our office for that. The cost estimation is due within the next three weeks. Project schedule-wise, it's slated for July 2022 for the 60% design. Pilot study for Well is June or July. Weston and Sampson predicts the cost of the construction of the new water treatment plant to be between, you know, probably between 17 and 20 million. We're holding 20 million as the, as the high side, just to make sure we have numbers safe for that. You know, for the purpose of discussion, we met with staff in Weston and Sampson for the permanent treatment facility, and we talked about submitting an SRF for drinking water. Weston and Sampson is to draft a project evaluation form, a PEF, for submittal in August. The purpose, you know, this might trigger a fall special town meeting to accelerate the funding and rather than waiting till 2022. On Well 10, DEP also had written approval for several of the conditions for that. The new pumping tests no longer were required by DEP. Pumping test performed in 2017 was sufficient, and as you may recall, that 2017 was a prolonged pumping test that we had performed as part of one of the articles that we had applied for back at town meeting back then. And Robert B. Hour has been selected as the contractor for, for the, for that project, and it was executed, and we're looking for a kickoff meeting in July coming up, to be determined. Our water pumpage thus far, June, as you see in the report, was 21.3 less than we were at the same time for the whole month of June, and in July, I've got new figures that go from July 1 to July 9, and that's 0.9% more than we were at this time last year, which, which is great for, considering we went through the 4th of July, and we had some nice hot sunny days. Just so you know, the water storage tank only hit the low level alarm once thus far, and that was on Friday, July 8. So, you know, there's a lot, if anybody has any questions, there's a lot in the report. Please feel free to ask, and we can certainly go over any of your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Temple. Select Board, Mr. Metters had us hand up.
Thank you, Tom. Just one clarification, just jog my memory. In the report, you mentioned the warranty for the damaged vessel was extended from 12 months to 36 months, but I recall, I thought we were going to get a replacement vessel for that, or am I incorrect?
It was my understanding from the beginning that it was always going to, it was always going to be a warranty for it. I can defer to Weston and Sampson, but that was my understanding. I know you talked about it at the last meeting that it was going to be replaced. I see Leah's on the line. If Leah, you want to elaborate on that?
Go ahead, Leah.
That was one of the, good evening. How are you all?
Good.
So one of the reasons we extended the warranty to three years is that allows us to actually physically inspect the insides of it when we move it to the permanent plant. So that was very deliberate on the timing of that warranty, so that we'd be able to get in there and see if there are any issues.
And we are, and we are comfortable that that's not going to shortchange us if something comes wrong within that three months, three years?
Well, yes, we are. So the, the damage report, the, the damage to the vessel was, the legs got bent, and there was, and there was some issues with the flange, so they were superficial-type damages, which is the reason why we asked for the report. So I think we're pretty comfortable with what we have.
Okay, just for clarification, when this was first reported to us, and again, if I'm, if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but I did, I did think there was some conversation about having the one-year warranty as kind of our safeguard, and then in having a replacement vessel at a later date, that was up for discussion. Am I incorrect in that?
I think you are correct. I do, I did hear that there was some of those discussions, but that is not what we ultimately settled on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metters, and Mr. De Castro, and I've got some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Metters is not incorrect. Okay, because I asked Tom Barr on two separate occasions whether we were going to get a new vessel, and I always told we were. I mean, I did it at this board meeting, so it looks as though we're, we're not getting a new, new one. We're going to, we're going to get the current one with a extended warranty. Is that, there's Tom.
Yeah, Tom, Tom, welcome.
How are you? So, yeah, so originally, when we had first talked about that, that was what was being discussed of potential, because we thought the damage to the vessel was much worse. When they did their report, when TIG did their report and got it back to Leah and the Weston and Sampson engineering staff, they were, they were much more satisfied with the, the less damage than they first expected. So that's why that part was taken back, and the extended warranty was given instead of a replacement vessel. So right now, that vessel is being used. We've been running it full now, that vessel is being used. We've been running it full-time into the system. And we have not experienced any issues with the vessel. It's doing exactly what TIG said it was going to do. So, right now, we are very comfortable with its performance. And having those extra two-year warranty will give us more time to make sure that this vessel is going to do what it needs to do. And if it doesn't, then we will go back to TIG and push for more of a, a new vessel or more work on their end to repair the, any damage that was done that they said was good after their initial report. So...
Was there, was there any damage inside, in the interior of the vessel?
That's what they kind of gave, they quick, I think Tom put it in the report there that the engineering group had in your packet. There's the detailed report that they did, the testing that they did on the vessel once they got it back to the site. So, as of what they are saying, it is in good shape. There doesn't appear to be any internal damage. Damage was just like Leah said, on the surface to the leg. That was, a new one was welded on and to one of the flanges that was sanded down and repaired. So, it only looked to be exterior at first. The initial report was, it was much, everybody was a lot more nervous and scared that there was more damage to it. But the, the report that they provided, Mr. Temple, is much more, I don't know what the word I want to use, but just a lot better. It's a lot better. So, we're, we're more comfortable with the fact that we're probably not going to need to worry about getting a new vessel.
The, the report says that the vessel's interior lining was ground away and reapplied in the affected section. So, that report was done by Weston and Sampson. They're the ones that did the inspection for the town?
No, it was, Leah, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was TIG that performed their...
That is correct.
Because they're the ones that designed these vessels and know how they operate properly inside and out. So, so they performed it. So, they had to just ground down the one area there to make the repair. And then, like I said, the biggest damage was the one leg that was bent from where the impact falling off of the truck was. But that has been completely replaced.
So, they, TIG designed the vessel? They're the, are they the manufacturer as well?
Yes.
And customarily, you get a one-year warranty on a new one?
Correct.
Did we get any reduction in price for this?
We did. We were paying for expedited delivery. The vessels, these pressure vessels are in very high demand right now. So, they credited the town, the, the expedited delivery, which was, I think, close to $40,000.
Okay. How much did this vessel cost roughly? Do we know?
200.
And it cost, cost 40,000 to deliver it expedited?
They're, they are monsters.
Okay.
If getting them, trucking them and picking them and setting them are, is, is a big deal. So, even if we do find issues with that vessel in three years, it, moving it and getting a new one is, will take some doing.
Okay.
But at least you'll have the mechanism to inspect it and, and go that route if you need to.
Okay. This is not something you get on Amazon Prime. Thank you.
I just have a quick follow-up on the, on the vessel itself. So, within, then the three-year window, we'll be allowed to get inside the vessel and inspect it. But, so, we can ascertain whether or not the warranty, you know, we have to make a claim on the warranty. I just, it's not going to run out. And then we find out, oh, whoops, you know, it's, it's, it's got issues. So, during that three-year window, we're going to have an opportunity to inspect the interior of the vessel and make sure that it's functioning as, as advertised. Is that correct?
And the wording on the warranty says that if it takes us three and a half years to get the plant constructed and we, they will honor that in the warranty. So, yes, that is correct.
So, in other words, just, in other words, before we place that vessel in the permanent facility, we're going to have the ability to ascertain whether or not it's, it's a viable unit?
You got it.
Good. Okay. So, I'm, I'm good with that. Other questions? I do, I have some other follow-ups here. In the, on the write-up on wells five and eight, permanent treatment facility, that, on number one, Tom, says project progress. MAST DEP approved pilot study on June 8th. Blue Leaf conducted onsite pilot study between June 13th and June 24th. Pilot study sought to evaluate performance of green sand filtration followed by resin and GAC contactors for PFAS removal. Number one, I just want to kind of know what that means because I have no frame of reference. And number two, what, what, how is the town of Barnstable treating their PFAS issue? Is it similar technology or is this different technology than what Barnstable is using? Because I know that they have quite a problem and they've been dealing with it for quite some time.
Tom, you all right with?
Yeah, yeah, you can go ahead.
So, so we compared resin with GAC. Both, those are two viable alternatives for removing PFAS from drinking water. And we are, as part of the pilot, that was in the pilot. So, we are going with granular activated carbon, GAC, which is what we're using at five for the temporary system. And it is also what Barnstable is using for their system for the removal of PFAS. Barnstable has more than just PFAS. And they have lots of different things going on. But they are using carbon for the removal of PFAS in their drinking water on several sources.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's helpful. I didn't know what, I didn't know what GAC referred to. And I was, it's comforting to me at least to know that Barnstable is using the same technology and it's working. So, I know it's, I know it's effective there. The project schedule and then the Weston and Sampson total cost of the permanent facility and the timing of financing and lining this up, I think, is a major issue for the town. It's a big number. It's $20 million, 17 to 20, call it 20. So, I think the sooner we kind of get insight on, on what the dollars are there, what the schedule is, where we're going to get funding, what the timing is, et cetera, is critically important as we plan the water budget going forward. And, and we plan our capital budget if it's affected at all by this major ask. Because $20 million is a major ask. So, as a, as a select board, we got to stay on top of this one. Okay? Seems like a lot of money to me, but I, you know, how much money is too much for water quality and purity. So, you know, I just want to stay ahead of the financing. That's all.
We met with finance and other department heads last week to talk about just that. Tom, do you want me to keep going and elaborate or?
No, that's, that's fine, Leah. You know, per our discussion with the staff, permanent treatment facility, we were talking about going the route via SRF and getting financing through that and to, to, you know, get the zero percentage, you know, fund on that and funding through that instead of taking out big bonds to, to cover it. So, then we talked about it would probably require or trigger a fall special town meeting. So, as soon as we get the estimates back from Weston and Sampson, as soon as we get the numbers ratcheted in to something that we, we will report it directly back to the Board of Selectmen. So, we're all on, on the same page moving forward.
That'd be good. I mean, I just, it's a big number. I just want, one further follow-up on the project progress on wells 10 and 11. Weston and Sampson is reaching out to DEP for clarification on a few of the conditions. Are any of the conditions unsettling or of, of worry, bothersome?
No. No, I think we're working through all of those. One of the issues, the pumping test that we did was like, they, they require you to do a pumping test within 12 months of putting the facility online. And the pumping test is currently at like eight months. So, that was one of the conditions that we had to request additional, a waiver on. And they agreed to that. So...
But there's nothing, there's nothing alarming in any of the conditions that, okay, good. Okay. Any other questions for these folks? Okay, Leah, Tom, Mr. Barr, thank you very much. Good update. Any, any comment, any comment or questions from the public here? Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, Elaine Gibbs. My memory was the same as Mr. DeCastro's and Mr. Meadows. The agreement was that it fell off the truck. It was going to be delayed. When it got here, assuming it worked, we could keep it until a new one would be delivered at the time the plant was finished. And this is different. And again, I can only relate to my personal life. But if I had ordered a refrigerator and it fell off a truck and they delivered, and they said, oh, well, you're going to have to wait two weeks, but we'll waive the expedited delivery. I'd say, well, yes, you are, of course. And then they were the ones that inspected it and said it's good. I, I think, moving forward on a $20 million project, that we've got to be a little bit tougher with any contractors that we bring in on this project to make sure that we're protected. We could find out in 40 years when the plant's ready to go that this thing is not working right and it's going to delay it further. So, I just, I, I think when we're told stuff and we move forward on certain things, we have to be able to be confident that things aren't going to change later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Anybody else here or online? Any hands raised online? There are, I see none. Okay. Mr. Meadows, yes, please.
Just something that caught my eye when we were just doing this. But, sorry. Just for clarification, in case I misheard. So, when we relocate the vessel from the temporary site to the new site, I believe it was said that if it takes three and a half years, they'll still honor that. But if I'm reading under page one of one of the, of the warranty, on the right-hand side under warranty, warranty conditions, item number two, it says this warranty will be considered null and void upon relocation of the equipment from the delivered site of 128 Training Field Road, Chatham, Mass. 02633. So, does this language trump? I guess, I want a clarification of what we're, will it be, what do we have in writing that verifies that in three and a half years, if it takes three and a half years, that when it's relocated, that we are covered? Because if I'm, again, if I'm reading this wrong, please correct me. But it says this warranty will be considered null and void.
It's, I don't believe it's leaving that site. It's staying on the same site, Corey. The, the difference with the one-year warranty that they were going to give us, if something happened after the one year, we'd be on the hook. This, we get to inspect after and we can find another company to do an independent test on it at the time when we're, we're, before the setup, when we take it apart, getting it ready to set up for the permanent phase. So, we can search and find somebody that's local and have an independent company come in and test it. If we find an issue, we can report it at that point in time because that's what they told us. The warranty was 36 months or for the startup or upon relocation. So, Leah, if you want to go ahead and, you know, make sure that we get that in writing to, to clarify that on top of what the...
As long as it's crystal clear that we're covering what we need to cover. That's all I'm asking. All right, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Meadows. Yeah. Yeah, Mr. DeCastro, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I had circled that, that paragraph also. So, are we saying that, it says literally, the warranty will be considered null and void upon relocation of the equipment from the delivered site of 128 Training Field Road. So, when we relocate it to the permanent facility, that's still at 128?
That's correct. It's still in the same location. It's not leaving the, the site.
I read that to say, when we relocate the vessel into the existing building, the warranty is done. So, if we relocate it in two years and we stretched it to three years, right? Because I think we're going to have this plant into service before three years. But if it takes two years to get that vessel into the plant, then the warranty is over. So, they're not honoring the warranty after the move into the new plant, which makes sense.
Why would, why would, why would we not want the warranty to continue for the full three-plus years, even though it's in a newer facility at the same site? Why would we?
Well, because somebody else is going to have to move it. And there's going to be liability associated with all of that, right? So, they, so when we hire a contractor to build this plant, we're going to, they're going to go get, they're going to get the media out of the filter that's on the site. They're going to move it up to the new building. They're going to crane it into the building. They're going to, they're, they're going to start it up. They're going to install media. And if I was TIG, I would say, what if they do that wrong? And we're not going to warranty that contractor for all of that.
Okay. I guess I, I mean, I can understand that from TIG's point of view. And I guess further to that point, if we simply had a one-year warranty, if we had a new vessel that wasn't damaged, we'd have just the one-year warranty at the existing site. And we might not finish the new building for two years. So, we would be moving a vessel that is unwarranted into the new building. And what you've secured is a warranty coverage for basically as long as it's going to be in its current site.
That, that's exactly, that's exactly correct. And, and the general warranty statement, number one, says just that.
Okay.
It says just that.
Okay.
It warranties those products of its, you know, their manufacture for material for a period of 36 or when it's, upon startup or upon relocation. So, it says exactly.
Thank you for clarifying. Thanks.
And one quick, one quick note if I could about the vessel. The thing is, we have the three-year warranty and it's going to take, like we're saying, about two and a half years hopefully to get this new plant built. This vessel will be in operation. So, we will know if there's a problem because we're going to be operating it at the temporary PFAS site down at the current well five. So, we will have knowledge well ahead of time before the three years or the moving of the vessel to the new permanent facility that is built. So, we're going to be operating this. We're going to have plenty of information as far as PFAS tests that we're going to be sampling because we have to sample at, once a month from that vessel. So, we will have a ton of, ton of data. And we will know well within that three years if there's a problem currently with that vessel. So, I don't know if that helps lighten anybody's concerns.
That is helpful. I, I, how, how many years are these vessels good for? Do we know?
30.
Okay.
They're, the vessels are just steel tanks.
Right.
And they're pressure vessels, right? So, there are no moving parts on these, on this thing. They're, that, so their warranty is really just the steel tank. And we don't, the, the primary reason for the extended warranty is associated with coatings. Because I want to be able to get in there and take a look at the coating repairs that they did. And we want to be able to make sure that we're not having any premature failure on that. But other than that, I don't really see anything else. To, to Tom Barr's point, I don't see any other issues coming up that we wouldn't have already seen.
Do the, does the filter get changed periodically, the filtering material?
The media in the filter is what gets changed. And that is doing the filtering. Yep.
How often, Leah?
It, it depends on the, the groundwater itself. So, if we have very high, we're very fortunate, I know having PFAS is not fortunate, but we're fortunate that our MCL is, is low as it is. There are other, other facilities that we're dealing with a much higher number. So, it basically what it comes down to is, as we're taking our samples from this vessel, we take it from four different ports. And we'll be able to know, because it's filled, the vessel is filled with the GAC, the activated carbon. And so, we'll have sample port number one and we'll have a, a number there. We'll have the PFAS six number. And if it's non-detect, great, we're good. But if we start to get something there, we take a sample at the next level. And that should be non-detect. And it goes down to the bottom of the vessel. So, once we get to the bottom of the vessel and we're, we're getting detects of PFAS, that's when we know, okay, shut this vessel down. Let's remove the carbon, get some fresh carbon in, clean the vessel, get some fresh carbon in and start over. So, it really all depends on the status of the water. And, and we're in a good spot where our levels are not to the extreme that a lot of other communities are dealing with. So, we're hoping that this vessel will, the carbon that we have now should last us at least, because again, we're only running it temporarily. We're only running it for the, the peak season. We'll probably be shutting this down in October and then turning it back on around Memorial Day. So, we should be able to extend the life of this carbon up until the permanent facility is built. If not, then we'll get the new carbon replaced and changed out. But we'll be monitoring it. Like I said, we take the PFAS samples out of there regularly. And we'll be well ahead of where we need to be to make sure that that carbon is doing what it needs to do.
And we haven't, we haven't yet... And we haven't, we haven't yet awarded a contract, right, for the construction of the permanent facility? Okay.
No.
And there are other manufacturers or companies that would come in and be able to relocate this for us at the time when that's needed? Who would, who would be knowledgeable about these tanks? Okay, okay.
Yeah, like Leah said, it's, it's more or less just a big, giant vessel, so, most contractors will be able to move it, there's not any moving parts, per se, that we've got to worry about inside, it's just like she said, the paint.
Thank you for the, thank you for the extended response. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Castro. Mr. Shell, no, you're all set? Okay. All right, thanks, folks, thanks so much. Very informative. Next item on the agenda is an update from Eversource. We asked Eversource to come and talk about poles falling here in Chatham and other issues with respect to our electricity service here in the town. So, to that, to that end, Ronit Goldstein is with us, she's the Eversource Community Relations and Economic Development Manager, or Executive, or whatever, so run it. Is it Ronit or Ronit, or?
It's Ronit.
Ronit?
Ronit Goldstein with Eversource Energy. I'll take whatever title you give me.
Yeah, okay, Ronit.
I'll take manager, it's okay, even though I'm not a manager.
I was 0 for 2 on the pronunciation, but that's okay, Ronit.
That's okay.
Welcome.
Ronit Goldstein, Eversource Energy, Community Relations, Chair Dykens, members of, members of the board, Ms. Goldsmith, thank you for having me here in person, it's nice to see you in person. I think the last, last we spoke was after the January storm. I came before you earlier this year, just to talk a little bit about how we respond to storms, introduce myself, and then talk a little bit about some capital improvements we'll have coming down the pike. I'm here tonight, at your request and invitation, to talk a little bit about what happened specifically, and correct me if I'm wrong, I've come prepared to talk about the specific pole on Old Queen Anne, talk a little bit about what we have done and what we're planning to do, and then I can certainly provide an update on the longer-term plan and any other general questions, or specific questions that the board or the public may have, that I'm able to answer tonight. I do want to, I don't know if it's level set or just inform, though we did do an after-action for the pole that broke, that failed, I'll say, on June 28th, I believe it was Tuesday, 11:40 a.m., is the data that I believe I have. The poles, so, and again, if I'm informing the board and members of the public, and they're already aware of this, I'm sorry if I'm repeating, but just to make sure it's level set, some time ago, we'll say years ago, there was a decision that one utility, Verizon, or the electric or the communications utility, should not own all the poles, and so, they took the map of Massachusetts and they divided the towns in half. And so, there's towns that are Verizon-set and maintenance towns, which means Verizon owns and maintains the poles, and there are towns in which Eversource, the electric utility, formerly Nstar, or Comelectric, own and maintain the poles. Chatham is a Verizon-set town. That said, Eversource, for sure, has a stake in the game and has a vested interest in the poles, and vice versa in the Eversource towns, Verizon does, as well as Comcast, and the town has facilities and poles, as well as Open Cape and other entities, third-party attaches. So, subsequent to the, to the issue on the 28th, our engineering, our distribution engineering team did inspect the pole, they did what they're referring to as an investigation or an after-action, and it was determined that the reason, they believe the reason the pole failed was that the guy wire, so the guy is the wire that supports the pole and the anchor that's in the ground, was not sufficient. And so, because that was not sufficient to support the infrastructure on the pole, the pole broke. I did, and in addition to that, they identified a pole across the street, so we're going to work with Verizon, because they own the construction side of improvements to the poles, they own that guy wire, we're going to work together with Verizon to double up on that guy, make it stronger, so that it will support the new pole. There's one across the street that we're going to be working on, and then we're going to be inspecting, we've already started inspections for about 3,400 feet on Queen Anne Road, just to look at, again, the poles aren't ours, but we want to look at the guys that support them, and just in general, get a plan that we can work with Verizon. I did speak with my counterpart at Verizon today, I made her aware of the issue, and that it's really kind of come to a head, if you will, and, and there's citizens that are concerned, and I'm happy to, I know she will be in touch with town management, just to check in, she was technically off today, but she did pick up the phone when I called, and we will work together with Verizon, you know, in, in any way that we can, and, you know, in, in the items that we can control and construct. So, that's sort of the short answer on that. I don't, I want to pause and see if there's any, I just said a lot, pause and just see if there's any questions in what I currently said.
Questions from the Select Board on poles, placement, guy wires, inspections, go ahead, Mr. Shell.
I have one more, I'm, I'm sorry, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, Ellen did reference, and I told her that I would mention to you today, that there is a plan, there is a program at, at Verizon where they inspect every so many years, the entire town, and she said that she would check to see where Chatham is at. You know, I advise that we probably want to get that on their radar quicker than, or sooner than later. So, she is looking into it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A, a few years ago, 3, 5, something like that, I, I just observed as a resident that there were teams of people from a utility, perhaps it was Verizon, I don't know, that were inspecting poles and actually digging down and doing a, 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 I guess, I don't know if it was repairs, or, you know, putting them in, in better order than they appeared to be at the time. Do you, are you familiar with that, can you describe that?
So, it could be a number of things. One thing that comes to mind is actually contractors that work both on behalf of Eversource and similar contractors on, on behalf of Eversource or Verizon, that dig and actually inject, almost like a, something to prevent insects and, and other pests from, you know, degradating the condition of the pole. So, that, that's more than likely what it was. There's a company, Osmos, that does it for Eversource, and again, that's, they do every, it's a cycle, and they go and they, and that's one of the activities that they conduct.
Mr. Castro?
Yeah, I, I noticed the same thing that Mr. Shell was talking about in my neighborhood around Chattock Place, cross-street, where they were, and I asked the gentleman who was doing the work what they were doing, and that they were injecting something in the base of the poles. That didn't really go to the issue of whether the pole was solidly in the ground or not, I, I would imagine. And I will say one other thing about Verizon, because I had an experience in, in my backyard where a pole was being replaced, that it, it was difficult to, to reach a Verizon person. Eversource and National Grid are easier, easier to reach than Verizon, but once I did, I, I did make a contact who gave me her cell, and she was extremely helpful in the process, but I think Verizon could probably benefit from an easier access, communications-wise, from the public. But, those are my observations, thank you.
Sure thing.
Ms. Davis?
So, just to be clear, Verizon is the one that just maintains all the poles in, in the town. So, we're technically speaking to the wrong person about what the issue is with, with the pole incident that happened on Queen Anne Road.
In a way, I, I mean, it was our infrastructure that caused the outage for almost 5,000 customers, so we're, we are, you know, we're a party to, and we, and like I said, we have an interest, what I want to say is, to some extent, yes, I think you need to be speaking to Verizon as well, but I think it's good that I'm, you know, I'm happy to be here, because I think that the information is important. I think that, you know, we, we have a stake in it, and we, we should be improving upon the process of communication between the two utilities as well, and I've sort of made that clear internally to our own engineering, that if, if we feel that, say, for example, in this, in this incident, if we feel that, that certain guys are not sufficient to support the infrastructure, we probably have the heaviest infrastructure on the pole, then, then we need to be kind of improving upon that reporting mechanism between the two utilities and, and kind of get it done, if you know what I mean. So, not kind of wash our hands of it and walk away and say it's Verizon, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. One more question. So, just to be clear, when the incident happened, Eversource came out and made the repairs on the pole and to the, the wires?
Yes, but there's further, there's further, we made it safe, so we have an obligation to make it safe, and I saw a photo, it wasn't there that day, but I did see a photo of the pole like this, it was, you know, it was parallel to the street, which should not, it should not be. So, it's our obligation to make it safe and to bring up customers as quickly as possible. We initially picked up through switching about 100 customers, and then picked up everybody else about 40, 50 minutes later. We knew that the initial act was not sufficient for a longer term, we had to take an outage to conduct that safely, as you all know, we took out the same number of customers for about an hour, I want to say between 2:45 and 3:45, I have the, the data in my bag, but, so we have an obligation, we did conduct a fix, but we identified that there's additional work that, that we're going to have to work with Verizon to do, to shore up that guy.
So, are we in contact with Verizon on this matter?
Yes, they've been notified.
And will they be talking with the town about what their inspection schedule is and any repairs that may be done?
Yes, we'll follow up. I, I wasn't aware that, the, the person was out of the office today, but she's been in contact with me, so we'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ellen is great, the, my counterpart at Verizon, and I, like I said, I felt important to just advise her that I'm going to be here, and I think we, you know, we have a shared responsibility to do that for one another, so.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah, I, I guess the second part of this is, Mr. Chair, that this, you know, there's a couple of poles like this that are all over town, and it's dangerous, and we should have Verizon come before us as well to, to give us an explanation as to, you know, truly what their scheduling is, and, and let us know when was the last time that they actually did an inspection and repair.
Right, yeah, and I, I think we take it a step further, frankly, when we request an inspection, anyway. Mr. Matters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you very much for coming and, and providing the information. Just to kind of follow up on previous comments, I think we'd, obviously, this is, this whole, this matter, collectively, we're all involved in this, we all benefit from it, and there, as Selectman Davis mentioned, there are other poles in this town that we've identified, the citizens have identified, that are probably close to the pole that just went down, you know, status-wise, condition-wise. So, we reach out to Verizon, I'm glad we're doing that, but I think jointly, we should work on this, because you have skin in the game for your equipment, benefiting your customers, customer service on your side, I, I get it, sometimes it's Verizon poles, sometimes it's Eversource poles, but I think we need to do this in a, in a timely manner, because there are poles out there that are, in a very timely manner, probably going to fall, or good winds. So, I'd rather be proactive and try to address them before we're doing it in the middle of a storm, because then a lot of grumbly people come forward. So, I think from just a customer service perspective, we can all work collaboratively and get some of these poles addressed in the, in the summer weather or the fall weather, it would be a great benefit to a lot of people.
I completely agree. I, I will say, and I know this will probably be received, it's a little odd to hear, because when I, I joined, I came from a water utility, so I actually found the, the previous conversation interesting, I worked at a treatment plant with granular activated carbon, so, but when I came to the utility, one of the things that was new to me is to see sometimes leaning poles, and so I wouldn't, the one thing I would advise is that the poles are, you know, it's a push, it's a tension between the poles, and sometimes that pole is leaning, it doesn't mean that it's about to fall, it means that it's, again, I don't want to make a blanket statement, but it, as far as the integrity of the pole, I think it, it really should be upon, incumbent upon the utilities, whether it's Verizon, Eversource, to kind of determine the safety. Does that make sense? Despite the look, and I hate to say that, but that's what I've been told as well, that sometimes, in a, you know, the weather that we've seen, you know, we're, we are the ones that are the, on the front line, with all of the towns and with your emergency managers, and so, of course, we're the recipients of, of the grief when the power goes out. Sometimes it's the poles that are perfectly upright that have been taken by the significant wind that you've seen, both in October and in January. So, I'm, I'm hoping for a milder storm season, but I don't know, we'll just have to wait and see. But I complete, to, to your point, Mr. Matters, it, I, I, we have to work together, that's why I came with the approach, I wanted to inform that Verizon was sort of the lead in maintenance, but, but they can't do it without us, so.
Yeah, thank you, I think that's very informative, I think we reach out to Verizon, we say, where are we in the inspection queue, and let's accelerate that queue, because we've had an incident here, and we're not comfortable. So, I think we'll direct Jill to obviously do that, and we'll follow up. I, I hope, I hope you're going to address the second feed that we discussed the last time you were here, Ronit, so if, would you please speak to that?
Sure, I sure can, so, I will preface it by saying, with anything at a utility, it is not a quick process, engineering and designing a, a project of that size, but what I can tell you is that it's, it's gone through several iterations, and it's in design, which is good. I put it on their radar, again, engineering, that we want to, I, I'd like to be able to commit to when they will start the project, I didn't get an answer, so it's going to be, I should back up and say it's going to be a multi-year project, let's say, two to three years, because it's coming from, because of the length, so it's coming from the Harwich, we call it the Harwich Bulk Substation on Luthrop Ave in Harwich, all the way, that circuit is coming all the way into town, and what they're going to do is reconductor it, which in simple terms means you're going to get a new line, to my knowledge, on mostly existing poles and infrastructure. But that's going to take time to construct, that's why it would be multi-year, because of the distance, it's miles. But the good news is that I'm, you know, I'm pushing to get it on their radar and, and get it started in, in, in the next calendar year. They're reviewing the 2023 capital plan right now, and I spoke to the lead engineer that is responsible for Chatham yesterday and today, and I said, can we, and I'd like to be able to make some sort of commitment to the town soon. So, that, that's the update that I have for you, I don't know if it's much, if you expected more in a, in a hard date, but I, I feel encouraged that it's more than likely going to be on the capital plan for next year.
Okay, well, that's, that's better than not, having, having it teed up there and, and pushing it forward. I was kind of wishing we'd have something in place for this winter, it doesn't sound like we are, but anyway.
I think the construction would be tough over the summer, we, we have a hard time, because of the, the time-of-year limitations, and it's all in the roadway, it's not in a right-of-way, it's all poles and wires on the distribution, which is the lower voltage, which is what you see in the roadway versus in somebody's backyard.
And again, that second feed won't be a guarantee of having, you know, discreet or sacrosanct electricity all the time, but certainly will give us a better, better odds of having electricity staying on in these major storms that we get down here, because...
It's going to be a much-needed improvement, absolutely.
We get hammered, we get hammered, yeah, okay.
You're surrounded by water, I get it.
Yeah, we, we get it from all directions.
Yep.
Okay, any more comments or questions from the Select Board? Comments or, yeah, comments or questions from the, the public? Elaine Gibbs?
Thank you for coming.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I have some comments. First of all, were any cars involved? Did a car get hit or any injuries?
I, no, I'm not aware that, so, sometimes the pole gets hit by a car, I'm not aware that this particular incident was a result of a car, whether it was hit in the past, I don't know, but this particular incident, no, no one was hurt.
So, and was there a transformer on the top, and that's why we lost 4,500? It was a utility, it, it was an Eversource transformer?
I believe so, the, the only transformers on the poles are ours.
Yeah, and so, it, it, they said it toppled versus, you're saying it broke. I mean, aren't poles, when they're put in, you drill down, so that a good eight feet are underground? So, they're not just sitting on the surface. One of the things, and again, social media is an issue, but a lot of people travel the roads, and there were stories that there had been a pole laying along the side of the street, right next, near that pole, for three or four months. Do you know if Verizon had planned on replacing it and just never got around to it, that they thought that there was a problem with it?
I, I can't speak to, to that.
I think it's a little unfair to ask about Verizon.
No, I was just wondering, if, you know, if your guys were out there, if there was a pole, and they had had reports, because my understanding is some people in the town had notified them that it was an issue and it had to be taken care of.
Yeah, I can't, I don't want to speculate, I feel it's unfair, especially since it's Verizon, if it were Eversource, different story, maybe I'd, I'd have the information.
Okay, because I, you know, live downtown, and so I just drove this route, and I think this is a bigger issue than I think we all thought it was, because of Verizon's involvement. Because, and Tom Templeson, maybe he could answer some questions, you know, just going down the corridor, I identified some places for you that, there, I, I don't think you have to be an expert to know that there are some serious issues with those poles. When we did the West Chatham Corridor, Verizon was supposed to come in and do their job, and then Eversource was supposed to come in, and the whole idea was that they were going to put in new poles, because they had to be relocated, and then the power service was going to be transferred to the new poles, and you drive up and down there, and I've never seen such jerry-rigging in my life, every single pole is different. There are new poles that are up, that were put up, and the old poles, the, the power was never moved to the new pole, so they just put a board in between the two, some have five or six wires, some have big poles leaning. put a board in between the two. Some have five or six wires. Some have big poles leaning against them. Some have nothing. And they're just, outside of the Fisherman's Alliance, the one that has light on it, it goes sort of like this, because of all the weight that seems to be on it. Those are no transformers, so it's probably not yours, it's probably Verizon's. But it's leaning over, you know, it could fall into the street. The former West Chatham Grill building, I mean, there's a pole there, it's got a transformer on it, and it's leaning like this. There's no support, there are no wires, there's no big thing, you know, on a 90-degree angle. And if that goes, it's going to take out other wires and it's going to hit the building. There's a pole across from Bailey's Path, there's a pole at Evergreen Ridge Vale, the pole at Pace has three transformers on it, and it's not a straight pole, it's leaning. There's one at the Liquor Locker and at the Odin Art Gallery. When we did West Chatham, you know, $5 million of taxpayer money was spent, state and federal. And I don't think this was the vision that we had in terms of the utilities. They were supposed to, the whole idea was they were going to clean up the whole area. In addition to the fact that people have commented it looks like entering a federal prison, in terms of aesthetics for the town, it is very distracting for drivers, because the poles are so close to the road, some are leaning, they're not perpendicular to the earth. And I would hope that we get Verizon in here and find out whose responsibility it is, because they didn't finish the job, in my view. There's a lot of cleanup work that has to be done, and it sounds like it may be more Verizon than you.
So there's one thing, if I can, if you don't mind, ma'am. One thing that I can offer up, I don't want us to, one of the things you described, and I don't know, I can't quantify the number of poles you described as double poles, and those would be the ones where a new pole is set right next to it, and there's either something connecting the two, and sort of caught my ear, my ears went up, is that the electricity wasn't transferred. That's on us. So if there are, out of that list of 10 or 20 poles, if there are 10 poles that we're holding up that process to eliminate the double pole, because we're the first, the way that works is that electricity is at the top, communication is in the middle, you know, Comcast, and then Verizon at the bottom, it always starts at the top. And so if we don't start and transfer, the other two utilities can't.
Okay.
So that is, I, you know, I offer to the board and to the residents, if I, what we would need is either an address or a pole number, which is right on the pole, other than it's, other than that, it's a needle in the haystack. If you happen to know the pole numbers, I'm happy to receive that information.
I think you can just drop down the street if you see them. They're pretty obvious.
What I'm offering up is that I'm happy to work with someone to get that process going, because we don't want to hold up that process.
No, that's a great offer, Roni, and we'll certainly take you up on that. I think we'll probably assign that, though, to Mr. Temple rather than having Elaine do the poll, do the poll survey for the town.
Sorry, Tom. Sorry.
I think that's.
No, and I didn't imply that you should do a poll survey.
That's all right. But anyway, and I think, you know, we have to have a conversation with Verizon as well. But Mr. Temple is on and Mr. Di Pasquale is on. I know, I think Dave wanted to speak to perhaps Elaine's question about any damage or anything. So, Tom, why don't you go, and then Dave, you go, and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet.
As some of the Select Board members had mentioned, when they had, when Verizon had come out and done some of their study the last time, not only were they doing some injection, but they also looked like they were taking some cores. And I'm not sure, you know, what the report was, the town never got any copy of the report. They also placed some brown, silver type of, it's colored brown, but it goes up part of the pole. And not sure if those are poles that are in question, that might be, you know, needing to be replaced. But where the town is, you know, where the utility companies are leasing space from the town, and all the state, when you're in the state right-of-way layout, you're leasing space from them. I think it, I think it's a point where Verizon needs to give a copy to the town to let us know what the status is on these poles. I mean, we go out during all these storm events and during, we had the tornado, we still have poles that are, still haven't been replaced from the tornado, that are tied, like Elaine had said, where they're pinned together and they haven't been completed. You know, the rule of thumb in the, in the old days were, you know, there was 14 or 15 working days to do your transfer, and then the other utility companies were going to follow. The tornado was a couple of years ago, two or three years ago. You know, we need to have a representative from Verizon out here to give us some, some information, provide us with the plans of the poles that are failing, that needs to be replaced, and give us some heads up. So, you know, we're the people that are out during the storm events with the police and fire, trying to keep roadways open. And, you know, safety-wise, I think we need to know these, this type of information from them, what's, what's ready to fail. So, Roni, if that's something that you can provide us with, or give, give us the information for Verizon, who I should contact, I'd like to get a copy of that report on behalf of the town.
Sure. I'm happy to connect you with Ellen. And with regard to the double poles, Tom, we can work on that, kind of take it offline. That's a report that all utilities have access to, a shared database. In fact, the town probably has access to it, but it would only show the poles that the town has infrastructure on. But I'm happy to, you know, double poles are kind of a common theme. They're not pretty, to say the least, and, you know, we all, all of us, Verizon, Comcast, and EverSource, to do a better job trying to get rid of them. But every time you install a new one, a new one, a new pole, then there's another double pole. I hate to say that.
Well, thank you.
Sort of a never, it's a never-ending story.
Yeah, I would just say that the roundabouts have been completed for a year. And I assumed that when everybody signed off, that they were all complete. And clearly, going just through the corridor, the West Chatham Corridor, I mean, if that's permanent, they never finished the work. I don't, I don't think that's, I can't believe that's the way they would intend to leave it in some communities. It is not attractive, but it's also distracting. And I think it's dangerous. And I think we were really lucky that this pole did not hit a car. If you were all out on the road that day, I've never seen so many traffic jams. We had a detail police to just about every street that we had, Meeting House Road, Middle Road, Sam Rider Road, George Rider Road, Old Queen Anne. It was absolute gridlock. And if it had hit a car, it could have been deadly. So I would hope that this is a priority. And if I could expand it a little bit for the next meeting, at the same time, in the community center, there was a meeting on the third floor, and the power went out. I thought it was a standby generator and would automatically go on, and it didn't. And so what happened was, people were on the third floor, the elevator shut down, and there were hallway lights, but there were no stairwell lights. So an elderly, a lot of people writing me, an elderly person had to be led down the stairs with a cell phone flashlight. So I don't think that's okay. I'd love to know what the protocols are about how the generators turn on so people can use elevators, and what the protocols are. Did, did we contact EverSource about the pole down, or did you guys find out first? Who found out first?
So I would, I can't say for certain, but I would imagine our dispatch saw the outage instantaneously. I mean, they have monitoring on the, on the electric system.
And then you would notify the town staff? Because at that point, somebody should have said, do we have anybody trapped anywhere?
Public safety would be involved in that, and they would call that we have a process with public safety.
I'm going to interpret to Chief Di Pasquale, who's on, I think probably has some insight here, okay? Chief, you there?
I have a little bit.
Hi.
First of all, I have to say, you know, when this happened, Roni called me. I didn't call her. When I call her, she answers her phone. We have the best relationship we've ever had with EverSource. Do they have some issues? They sure do. I just want to make sure that we give her credit for standing in front of you all and, you know, taking the hit for a lot of things that are a Verizon problem. You know, she was reluctant, I think, to even come tonight, because she doesn't want to throw Ellen under the bus. Ellen's great, too. She works with us. But, you know, these are Verizon poles, majority of them. But that's neither here nor there. I just wanted to say that Roni called me immediately when we had the outage. I was having conversations with Jill. We were trying to ascertain whether we could have the Selectments meeting that night or not. And, you know, it was very fluid. I finally drove down there, and I was talking to Roni, I was talking to somebody on the site, and they said that we would be, we would have power back. And they were right, we did have power back, and we did have the Selectment meeting that night. But I just have to say, overall, the relationship that we have with EverSource, especially during these storms, and the tornado, and all, everything since I've been a deputy or a chief, is, it's never been better. And I know they have some flaws, and they're, they're trying to work through them. I'm not defending them at all. I was, I was furious, you know, we had a temporary generator problem at the station when this happened. But, but again, Roni called me. So I think there's a, I think we need to bring Verizon in here, too. My thing, and this is a personal belief, I just don't think Verizon has any skin in the game. You know, we don't have FiOS in Chatham, so, you know, where does Verizon get any money in Chatham? You know, I don't think they have the, I don't think they have any skin in the game. So I don't think they're, I think they're reluctant to spend any money on these poles. But that is a personal belief.
Okay.
As far as the, you know, the community center, you know, we don't have a permanent generator at the community center. We will, very soon, hopefully. But, you know, that, you know, we have a generator that we can bring there, because it's only set up right now for a warming station and a cooling station, which this was neither. So we didn't turn the generator on, it was only a few hours. Nobody was in any, you know, great need of heating or cooling. So, but we're looking at all of those issues. I can assure you, those are at the top of our radar. But I just want to make sure that, you know, the town understands the relationship that we have with Roni Goldstein. She's, she helps us, I mean, they set up in our, in my building during the tornado, EverSource set up in our building. So we want to talk about having a resource here. And I think we were up and running faster than we ever would have been in any other time. So I, again, I, it really stinks to have your power out, but, and mine was out, too, and the station was out for a little while, and we lost power during the storm in January, and the generator failed. But she's been there to help us. So I, I just would be reluctant to, you know, place any blame on her. She's, I think she's a fantastic partner with the town.
I know that.
Thank you, Chief.
I would just like to say, this is not personal.
Thanks, Chief.
She's a lovely lady. It is about utilities, it's about heat, and it's about power, and it's about danger. And I know that you're not personally responsible.
No, no, I don't take it personally. I'll take the kudos on you, but I don't take it.
So we get it. No, 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 we get it. And we get that, we get, we have to reach out to Verizon. And I've got Mr. Sharkey on, going to let him speak, and then we're going to move on here. Mr. Sharkey?
Thank you.
If we could get Verizon in here and find out what they're doing with those poles to straighten them out and make sure they don't fall over again, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Mr. Sharkey?
Yes, thank you, Board of Selectmen, for letting me speak to this matter. And thank you to Roni for showing up today. Yeah, apparently, her presence, you know, where there's a Verizon pole involved, really is not really needed for this discussion. But I'm still focusing on what happened in January. And, you know, here's a situation. I'd like to talk about some short-term and long-term things. You know, short-term, you know, we should be out removing trees that are near the wires this time of year, you know, things that should protect the wires, that bring us electricity, that basically, you know, provide heat or power, whatever, lifesaving electricity, just as important as water, needs to be protected. I don't want to be in a situation where we start pointing fingers, well, it's a pole issue, and it's, you know, this and that. So electricity is important. And I think if it's at all possible for the town to perhaps, you know, look at it as a utility that we look at water, you know, a life-giving entity, and is there anything that we could do as a town for our future to take possession of the electric distribution system in our town ourselves? I know that would mean, you know, probably paying to have the utilities placed underground. Maybe we could do that as each street gets repaved or something like that. But we need sort of a long-term plan to get us out of this situation. The telegraph pole was invented like in 1843, and that's still what we're relying on to hang wires. And it's not going away. We just keep talking about the problems that poles present and wires present hanging on poles. And then the storms come, they knock the wires down, and we go put the wires back up, and we do it all over again. So it seems to me, short-term, you know, we got to do more to reinforce the capability of the electrical system being hung on poles. And long-term, we've got to talk about getting rid of poles and putting the utilities underground, perhaps that, you know, town ownership. If the private utility won't do it, then we've got to do it ourselves. I think our town would be in great benefit if we could take, take possession of it, similarly to the way we handle our water. Thank you, Board members.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sharkey. There's a lot to unpack there, and we'd love to have underground utilities here.
Thank you, Mr. Sharkey, for your comments. There's a lot to unpack there, and we'd love to have underground utilities in the town of Chatham. Who pays, how much, when, where, with whom, on and on. It's a, that's a major project, but we would love to have underground utilities in this town. Would save us a lot of heartache, but I'm sure it's extraordinarily expensive.
One item that Mr. Sharkey mentioned that I did make note is just get, and I can follow up with, with Jill or with the board via email, or however you like, is vegetation management, sort of find out where we are. It's a cyclical process. They're out every single day, 365 a day, 365 days a year, trimming trees somewhere on the Cape. They're out every day. So I'd just like to, for my own, and if it's helpful to the board and to Mr. Sharkey, just to know where, where we're doing that preventative work now.
Super. Tom, your hand's still up. You want to comment again, or are you done?
It's down.
Okay, thank you. Roni, thank you very much for the update. Any other comments from the Select Board and/or the public? Any other questions? Okay. Roni, thank you very much for coming. Truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Should I have any further updates on the long-term plan? I'll be sure to convey them.
Yeah, we'll look forward to that. We really will. Thank you. That, we have public comments next on our business agenda, and I'm going to briefly just summarize our business agenda this evening. It's more lengthy than it has been. We have a couple special one-day alcohol permits, Chatham Threadworks, Chatham Harvesters Cooperative, one-day entertainment permit, Chatham Marconi Maritime Center, and Buffy's Ice Cream. Considering an application for a common victualer's license, Chatham Sunrise Port Profile Project, the Cape Cod Fisherman's Alliance, Mass. Division of Marine Fisheries Urban Harvest Project. Look forward to hearing about that. Request to change no parking sign at 513 Main Street, which had blue fins and pine acres and ducks in the window. A fiscal year '22 year-end budget transfer from Alex Halella, and the consideration of a draft letter of support for the Upper Air Station relocation to Chatham Municipal Airport. And then we'll end with committee appointments and reappointments. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on that business agenda forthcoming? Anybody online that would like to comment on the business agenda to be forthcoming? Okay. All right. First item on the business agenda, a special one-day alcohol permit for Chatham Threadworks. Is there anybody from the Threadworks here this evening? Okay. So, Shawna, are you on?
I'm on the.
I'm sorry?
Can, I, this is Jen Falvey. I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you, yes. Please, Jen.
Yes, I'm the owner of Chad's Better.
Hi, Jen. Just want to give us a brief summation of what you're doing?
Yep, just like last year, we're having pop-ups on Mondays on Main, and some Saturdays or Fridays with local small businesses that don't have retail stores. So we do it right on our lawn and inside the, my shop at 400 Main, where we promote, like I said, small women-owned businesses or local artists as well. And from 4:00 to 7:00, we offer, inside the shop, we offer a glass of Prosecco or a glass of wine if the customers would like.
Okay. Any questions from the Board, the Select Board? Mosin?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the special one-day alcohol permits for wine and malt beverages only to Jen Falvey as a representative of Chatham Threadworks for service at 400 Main Street, Unit 3, on Monday, July 18th, Friday, July 22nd, Monday, July 25, Monday, August 1, and Monday, August 29, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
In a second. Thank you. Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Chair says aye as well. Have fun, Jen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. We have a request from Chatham Harvesters Cooperative. Okay. We have a request from Chatham Harvesters Cooperative for a special one-day alcohol permit for wine and malt beverages only for service at 95 Commerce Park, Units Seven to Eight, on Thursday, July 21. And here is Mr. Brett Tolly. Good evening, Brett.
Good evening to the Select Board. Brett Tolly here to speak on behalf of the Chatham Harvesters. And I'll describe what we're doing.
Go ahead.
So this, this event is in partnership with the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. This will be our opening ribbon-cutting ceremony. We will be sharing with the public our vision and new locally-caught seafood products, you know, aiming for, I don't know, 50, 100 people. And we're down at Commerce Park.
Well, that's super exciting. Do you want to just comment briefly on the Chatham Harvesters Cooperative, Brett?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. We've, we've been forming for the past five or six years. The purpose of the cooperative is to empower local fishermen to have more control over their own catch and be able to market it both locally and regionally, both retaining more value of that catch, but also connecting the community to locally-caught species that they otherwise would not know about. We've been building toward this moment where the cooperative has its own facility. You can actually cook and smoke locally-caught seafood. And so we're really excited to be launching for the first moment. We'll be doing lots of fun events over this, you know, summer, and hopefully a lot, you know, well beyond that as well. And, and yeah, the date of the event is the 21st.
Super. Thank you. Mr. Metters?
Oh, go ahead.
If I may, I move to approve the special one-day alcohol permit for wine and malt beverages only to Brett Tolly as a representative of Chatham Harvesters Cooperative for service at 95 Commerce Park, Units Seven to Eight, on Thursday, July 21, 2022, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second. Thank you. The request has been moved and seconded. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brett. Have fun. Sounds like fun. Good luck. Next item is a one-day entertainment permit, Chatham Marconi Center, for July 13, 2022. Is there a representative from the Marconi Center here? Mr. Fishback?
Good evening, Bob Fishback. I just, first, I want to apologize for springing this entertainment permit on you on short notice. We've, we've been through the COVID period not doing anything at Marconi for quite a while with the public, so it dawned on us belatedly that we ought to do this, in particular, since we are going to be seating people on your grass. So, but we are, we are hosting a, an afternoon concert tomorrow afternoon with a steel drum solo. It's open to the public. It's been announced in the Chronicle and so forth. And we've, we're not charging anything, so it's free. It's just a family-friendly event. We're hoping to get some of our members and friends and supporters and new friends and supporters and members to come enjoy the music for an afternoon on the lawn.
Well, thank you. Super, super. Any questions from the Select Board? Hearing and seeing none, I'll take motion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Davis?
I move to grant a one-day entertainment permit to Bob Fishback as representative of Chatham Marconi Maritime Center, 831 Orleans Road, on Wednesday, July 13, 2022, from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well. Have fun, Mr. Fishback. Good luck. Okay, the next one. We have a one-day entertainment permit for Buffy's Ice Cream, 456 Main Street. Is Chris here or anybody from Buffy's? Yes, please, come forward.
Chair Dykens, Select Board, thanks for accommodating our late add to the agenda. And it's been great to be in town and to have the pink and blue shop open there at the end of Main Street. And the essence of our appeal for a one-day permit is really celebrating ourselves while also transacting business and making a little noise in a reasonable way. Per the application, what we are anticipating is hosting a band, a four-piece band, in the backyard of Buffy's, which I like to refer to as the Retreat. And they would be playing two sets, one from three to five in the afternoon approximately, and the second set from seven to 9:30. And it's a staff, family, and friends celebration. We will be transacting business out front, as we typically would be on Saturday, and this is planned for this Saturday, while also hosting the band out back. And I've been in touch with some of the neighbors so far, Tale of the Cod and galleries next door, and so far favorable feedback, and hoping that the license gets approved. Your input.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Comments or questions from the Select Board?
Just, do we have the hours?
Says seven to nine thirty.
Seven to nine thirty.
Three to five.
And seven to nine thirty.
And seven to nine thirty.
Thank you.
Take motion.
I move to approve the application, I mean, the application for entertainment license for Buffy's Ice Cream on Saturday, June 16, from two to 10 p.m. It says the hours of entertainment are. So I think we should leave it as flexible as possible.
Okay. Is it two to 10, Chris?
Yes, just sort of bounding.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. The essence is that there will be two sets of, for the band to be playing music, but we expect the Buffy's to be open during normal hours, so noon to 10 p.m. But the band would only be playing the earliest at 3:00 o'clock.
Okay, all right. So we have, we have, we have three to five and seven to nine thirty. Okay, okay.
Do you want me to amend that?
No, I think, I think it's fine, but traditionally, we allow some time for setup and breakdown of stuff. So the window is, I think it's fairly accurate. You know, if they're running 15 minutes one way or another, I don't think it's that much of a big deal, so.
Super. It's been moved, seconded?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Metters, what say you?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Castro?
Aye.
The chair says aye. Have fun, Chris. Thank you. Okay, a new, application for a new common victualer's license, Chatham Sunrise at 247 Orleans Road. I believe it was Lorenzo James? Mr. James?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I am standing in for Lorenzo James this evening. So we would like to deliberate a little on the restaurant that we're going to open, which is.
I would like to comment on what he's saying. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kenesia. I will be the manager onboard and also standing for Lorenzo James today. So we're actually going to be opening a breakfast and lunch restaurant on 247 Orleans Road, North Chatham.
Yes.
And we actually came up with this idea because we've been in the restaurant industry long enough. This is going to be the kitchen manager, Richard Reed. He has been in the industry like for almost 25 years, and I've been also in the industry for almost seven years. And we saw the niche, and we like, we would capitalize on the niche of like opening a breakfast and lunch restaurant, where we'll be serving like a little seafood breakfast and with the normal American cuisine that goes together. So we're going to do like a mix for the restaurant.
And more, I would love to work with the community of Chatham.
And the neighborhood.
It's my first time, and I listened to the way everybody.
And the Chatham parade, I came in and I listened, and I'd like to like get actively involved with that as well.
Most definitely.
Super. Okay, just one question. The location, what is the location? 247, is it a building or a current building?
Is that next to the Shark Center?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
It is.
It's the old one.
Okay.
It's a coop.
Ms. Davis?
It was the former, and I believe before that, we did a little research. It was before the Lazy Lobster.
Yes, it was. Thank you very much. Ms. Davis?
Yes, I just want to comment. I'm very excited to see that there's going to be another restaurant in Chatham. We can't feed enough people in town, so we look forward to stopping in and saying hi. With that, I'll move to, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a common victualer's license by Lorenzo James for Chatham Sunrise, 247 Orleans Road, North Chatham.
Second that one.
Okay, any further, any further questions and/or discussion here? Mr. Castro?
I'm going to support this, but Mr. James, is it Lorenzo James, is he here? Is that a, is he or she currently in the restaurant business?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
Yes, he is.
Okay. Locally, or?
No. So actually, he's in Connecticut.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Castro, what say you?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well, and good luck. Have fun. Good luck.
Thank you.
Fare thee well. Open at 7:00 a.m.
Yay.
Okay. Next up, Port Profile Project, the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance, along with the Mass. Division of Marine Fisheries and Urban Harvest Project. This was a great package, really exciting stuff, and look who we have.
Hi.
Please come forward. Hi, Doreen. Please introduce yourselves.
Chalk Porcoskis, he's on our board. My name's Doreen.
Hi, Doreen.
With the Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance. And I just wanted to, we have like a five-minute presentation that I'm going to run through.
Absolutely.
I'm going to introduce who the Fishermen's Alliance is first, even though I know you all know who we are. I thought that'd be helpful for people in the audience. The Cape Cod Commercial Fishermen's Alliance was started in 1991 by a group of fishermen who worried the Cape's small boat fleets would disappear if managers didn't start paying more attention to the environment and sustainable fishing. Thirty years later, we just had our anniversary last year, our belief is much the same, and we take our lead from our fishermen members and are involved in advocacy, research, education, and policy to make sure local fisheries are not just a vital part of the Cape's past and present, but its future, which is why we partnered with the State Division of Marine Fisheries and UMass Boston Urban Harvest Institute on the Port-by-Port Profiles and Analysis of the Massachusetts Commercial Fisheries. And I know that I link to that, and you probably have that in your packet. And that was published last year. The report provides an overview of commercial fishing in Massachusetts, and for the first time describes conditions in each municipality with a commercial home port. The report is built around survey results from Harbor Masters, and Stuart Smith obviously participated, and also from fishermen and state landings, state landings data, and highlights both the important role that commercial fishing plays in the state's economy, as well as the access and infrastructure challenges that limit the industry's current operations as well as its growth. Our visit tonight is part of an effort by us and DMF, Division of Marine Fisheries, to visit every town on the Cape that has a commercial port to elevate the awareness and fisheries profile everywhere. Of course, Chatham probably needs less consciousness raising in this regard than almost any other community, but we still wanted to share our findings and share in this regional dialogue. One of the reasons why the state published the report is because many people don't understand the enormous economic value commercial fisheries have. Last year, our state's commercial fisheries were valued at $802 million ex vessel, meaning that the total amount fishermen were paid for their catch, all species, before that harvest was resold and markets a restaurant. So it's obviously much larger than the $802 million. Just for comparison, that's more than the value of all the agricultural crops in South Carolina, and about the same as the value of all of Alabama's crops. Our fisheries in the state are more valuable than all, like the country's barley and the country's carrots, and just a little bit less than the value of the country's broccoli, which I found a little shocking, but it's true. The Cape is a huge contributor to that number. We have many small ports, but added together, they exceed the value of Gloucester by 20 million. So that's, the Cape is 73 million versus 53 million for Gloucester, which is the second highest-valued port. New Bedford is the first. And those numbers have only grown since they were first tallied for the port study. The Cape is also the only spot where all the towns still have a commercial fishing industry. Some towns off Cape, such as Weymouth, no longer do. Chatham is the third most valuable port in the state, and I have some numbers which you guys have in your packet, but I'm just going to run through them quickly. There are 193, almost 200 permitted harvesters with a Chatham address, 315 vessels with a Chatham home port, about 30,000 trips landing in Chatham, 615 active permitted harvesters landing in Chatham, and 46 active dealers purchasing in Chatham, 27 million pounds of catch, and the ex-vessel value is 19 million, close to 19 million. The reason why Chatham is so successful and has successful fisheries is because of the community and, and the Harbor Master, who support the commercial fisheries in a variety of ways that other towns, including towns on the Cape, don't do. Chatham is one of the four towns on the Cape, along with Harwich, Province Town and Sandwich, that dedicate birthing spaces and other facilities to commercial fishing, which strengthens the fleet. Harwich and Chatham also have reduced fees for commercial vessels, as do Orleans, Eastham, and Province Town. But along with being the most, the third most valuable port in the state, Chatham also holds the third spot in the Northeast for fishing communities facing gentrification. So as communities work to balance competing uses for their waterfronts, there's a lot of people who want to be on the water, want to recreate on the water. Information about existing conditions, for example, the size of the local fleets, how many people are interested in pursuing a career in commercial fishing, as well as the challenges such as dredging and parking, and opportunities, including collaborations, can help decision-makers, which would be you and the town, make sure that the needs of the fishing community is met. Those who filled out the survey for Chatham, commercial fishermen, mentioned the need for gear storage, bait storage, and easier access to ice, as well as dredging, access to moorings, and parking. As it has in the past, the Fishermen's Alliance is willing to help the town. We can help with letters of support for grant funding, and there's a lot of different grants that are listed in the, I guess, the Port Profile Report that you guys have, Port Profile Report. And we want to let you know that we are also working with other towns, county, and the state on another need documented in the study, which is dredging. Senator Nacir was able to get a $75,000 amendment into the budget that would provide research funds for winter flounder, to see when they are spawning. And that might be able to widen the window, the dredging window, which is now based on outdated information. So that was, ran through that quickly. Thank you for having me and listening. And we actually have Rachel, is, she's working with us for the summer on ecosystem-based fisheries management, which is like a holistic approach to fishing. So she just came for moral support, I think.
Well, super. Thank you, Doreen. It's nice to see you again.
Yes, it's nice to see you guys, too.
And welcome. Comments from the Select Board? I love this report. It looks as though some of the data was done in 2019, but it's just, I'd like to have it posted somewhere on the, on the website or something. So it's just really interesting data. Any other comments from, from the Select Board? I'm sure Ms. Davis has comments.
Yes.
Hi, Doreen.
Hi.
And I'm glad to hear there's ecosystem-based management. When I was on the board of the Alliance, when it was the Hook Fishermen's Association, that was one of the things that I fought hard to see happen, but it was too soon for the group to get to that point.
We should connect you two. That would be great.
Yeah, we could talk. We could definitely talk. But anyway, just as an add-on to this, Doreen, you talk about the landings, but you're not, do you talk in the report about any of where the landings are going? Where's our seafood going? I've done a little bit of homework. I'm not going to put you in your place. I will tell you.
Oh, that's great. I want to listen, too.
So, yeah, just as a matter of fact, I've been doing some research on a grant that I just recently finished. It was found that 75% of the seafood on the Cape ends up out of Massachusetts. And, you know, and we get a lot of foreign fish, and we get a lot of other fish imported into the Cape. And so a lot of our local fish is not utilized very, very much within the system here. So I think it's important that would add to the value, the economic value of, of our landings if we could see more locally, that fish used more locally and sourced more locally. Some of the work that I've been working on is trying to direct it in that direction.
Absolutely. Buy more local fish. That's totally very supportive of that.
You know that. So when you did, this is really beneficial, I think, for the town because this kind of data, we've, you know, we haven't seen for a good 20, 30 years. I think the last time it was done was a dredging project in Chatham, where we did a, sort of like a off-the-cuff economic analysis of the, of the fishing fleet when, when we were trying to get Aunt Lady's Cove dredged. And at that time, we were talking about the value of the fleet being $10 million as the economic value. So this is quite an increase in value. But it's, this is good, good stuff for us to be able to use for grants. But it's, this is good, good stuff for us to be able to use for grants. It's also good for the public to understand the need to support commercial fishing in the town and what its value is. So thank you to the board for putting that together.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, good to see you again, Doreen.
Nice to see you, too.
I haven't seen you in a while, and I miss your routine political and government reporting that you used to do for the newspaper.
Thank you.
I say that sincerely. Just, I think this is a very helpful compilation of information, and I'm glad we're going to put it on the website. I just had a curious question. You mentioned the town of Weymouth, having, you know, being from Quincy, they were right across the border from me, because I grew up in the section of Quincy that abutted Weymouth. What did you say, that they no longer support their commercial?
Yeah, actually, I'm from Weymouth, so I just figured I'd just pull that. They had a list of ports, and I think Weymouth and Quincy do not have any fishery landings anymore. And obviously, I don't want that to happen to any port on the Cape, and it takes a community to make sure.
Okay. I was just curious as to what you were saying about that. Well, thanks again, because it's a good report, and I appreciate your coming.
And these numbers are a little, the 19 million, those numbers are a little old, they're actually much, they're higher. I tried to get the state numbers before I came, and they just weren't, the shellfish part of it wasn't compiled yet. And Stuart has been a, Ms. Stuart Smith has been a help to us, I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out. And the, you guys have protective bylaws in place, so like, if anyone leaves, they're still there. Other towns, it's more, it's not as set in stone, so that's something that we like, we appreciate about the town, so.
Thanks.
Oh, well, Ms. Davis, and then Mr. Metters.
Yeah, I have one more just comment, and it's on the 193 permitted harvesters with Chatham address. And I think the reason why we see so many harvesters here is we have a residence requirement for our shellfishing, and, you know, as somebody who's worked in the shellfish, I mean, fishing business all my life, one of the things that my husband and I always had was a shellfish permit, so if we didn't have, we could take advantage of the opportunities of like mussels that are now, you know, pretty prolific right now all over town, or, you know, if it was a good base sculp season. And it was actually a really good, as we were younger, support, financial support for us if a fishing year wasn't good. And it still goes on that way. People still jump off a boat, and they'll go clamming, or they'll go co-hogging, so that number probably does reflect a high amount of people because of the commercial shellfish residency requirement.
Yeah, I think there's like a saying that you probably heard, "Don't ever sell your skiff," I think that's what it is. Don't ever sell your skiff.
Mr. Metters.
Thank you, thank you very much for the report. The only thing I was just going to add, you have a chart in the packet that has type of infrastructure and lists all the availability, and the majority of these, you know, are listed, you know, we have ice, trash disposal, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One that is open says gear storage. Hopefully, with the benefit of our last town meeting and the funds that were available, we're going to have a fisherman's storage relocation. I mean, it's been there for a while, but a more formal, updated location, so we're going to be able to fill that box hopefully soon, so.
Yes, and we appreciate the effort that you guys have put into that, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, Corey. I highlighted bait storage as well, I didn't know if that's an issue for the lobster, the lobster, lobster men, or what. You know, if there's any, any kind of vision for any kind of bait storage anywhere in town, I don't know, but I highlighted gear storage as well, and I think we're addressing that. But, you know, I'd be interested in the breakdown of the value of lobsters versus sea sculps versus skate versus dogfish, it'd just be kind of of interest, I think would be kind of cool to know the value of the landings.
We can get that for you. They will break the numbers out, they just haven't done it, like he's almost done. There, I was so close to getting it for tonight, but I will get that, and I will, I can give it to you.
Reports like this are incredibly important for this town, because the commercial fishing fleet and its, and the commerce generated therefrom has been an integral part of the town for, you know, forever. So it's really cool to see it continue, and we're very supportive in this board and others, and the town in general has been very supportive of its commercial fishing fleet and the Harbor Master, and the great job the Harbor Master does managing the whole thing, because it's a lot of work to manage this puppy, that fish pier, and over in Stage Harbor now, and the waterways, it's a lot of work. But this town has been very supportive of its fishing industry and its fishermen and women for many, many years, so, and I'm proud of it.
Yeah, she should be, thank you.
We are, okay. So anything else, anything else for Doreen?
Did you want to add?
One other thing I want to bring up also was, you know, mentioned about the amount of local catch that gets, you know, exported out of state. And one of the things we're trying to do now is to make skate wings more acceptable. It's a fish, it's a delicacy in France, but underappreciated here, you know, in our region. And one of the things we're doing now, the Alliance started doing a haddock chowder back several years ago, and we tied in with the Massachusetts Food Bank and provided a lot of protein for people who are, you know, needing additional foods. And we've now transitioned that, well, added to our offerings, a fish stew which is made with skate. So we're trying to, you know, trying to do just what you mentioned, Ms. Davis.
It's amazing, it's like, it's really, really good. I could eat it like all day, it's just so good. Just saying.
Yeah, that sounds great, and I heard about the haddock, the haddock chowder, but I've always been impressed with the industry and its ability to transition and to morph and to change, or, you know, depending on what was available to catch, so oftentimes. And then I think we're in probably in another, you know, a decade or so of morphing even again, if you bring up skate wings as an example, it's a good one.
Yes, it's true.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Okay, off to, we're requesting a change for a no parking sign at 513 Main Street. It affects Bluefin's Pine Acres Realty, Ducks in the Window, to no parking during a certain timeframe from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. And I saw Mary out there, there she is, Mary Kavanaugh, the leader of the Chatham Chamber is here to speak to it, and I know it was brought up in our parking subcommittee as well, so, welcome, Mary.
Hello, everyone, thanks for having me. As you know, parking in town is hot topic, and parking spaces on Main Street are very short, or limited. So during the pandemic, when businesses had to pivot, we created parking spaces for to-go restaurants to have to go pick up. And the spaces that are in question right now are the, it's probably about three or four spaces in front of Bluefin's. So there's signage there now that says there's no parking, and there's the hash marks on the parking spaces. So during the day, people don't park there, and those spaces go unutilized. So I reached out to Andy Baylor, who is the owner of Bluefin's, who still has a very strong takeout business as a result of the pandemic. But I asked him if he would be open to us talking with the DPW department to see if maybe they could edit the sign and say that there's no parking between the hours of 3:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. So that would open up those spaces during the day to be utilized by residents and visitors. And Andy is open to that. I don't think taking the spaces away permanently would be a good solution, because he does still have a strong takeout business, and those, having those spaces there for people to pull in, pick up their, you know, to-go order, and then leave, keeps traffic on Main Street flowing. Whereas in the past, before we instituted these to-go spots, there was traffic jams on Main Street, people were double parking, and it just wasn't a good situation. So we were thinking, you know, it would be great if you all would approve to have the signage changed, and, you know, we'd have a few more spots available to residents and visitors during the day. So that was my request.
Super, Mary, thank you. Comments, questions? Mr. Metters.
Just a couple of thoughts. I mean, I had to have heard people saying, well, let's just put it back in the inventory, why have these particular spots reserved? And I have spent a little bit of time walking up and down Main Street, and I do have to admit, that's a very unique area, because if you do take them, put them back in the inventory, people are doing, trying to do takeout, they're going to park in very precarious little areas, it's going to get a little dicey, so I do think pro and conning it, I do think keeping these to some use does benefit public safety and traffic safety, so until something big jumps out at me, I'm fine with keeping them for that use. But I do think it benefits the community, the first traffic flow and everything else, so I'll convince with that section. The one question I do have is, so we have the Mondays on Main program going on now, obviously, a lot of people are in town. Bluefin's is closed on Mondays, so when I walked down Main Street the other night, those are spaces that could have been used for Mondays on Main. So what are your thoughts? I mean, how many signs do you want to put up? What kind of details do you want to put up?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure we could.
But, I mean, we're losing out on Mondays.
Yeah, that's a good point, I didn't even think about that. So maybe it could be edited to say that it's no parking, 3:00 to 9:00 p.m., Tuesday through Sunday, or something like that. And then Mondays would be open all day, and then you'd still have, you know, the parking there for the takeout when they are open, you know, from the 3:00 to 9:00, the Tuesday to Friday.
I am sure.
And it would just be still one sign, you know, we wouldn't have to have multiple signs.
I'd be more comfortable with that, because, I mean, great.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
People are going to have to use, but Mondays seem to be busy, every space is a valuable, and if we're going to bring more people downtown on Monday, that's several spots that we could use for great locations, so.
Yep.
I would feel more comfortable trying to get a, strike a balance with everyone's use, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's great, and, yeah, it's a great idea.
Want to move it, Corey?
So I move, let's see if I can get the right wording, that we changed, nope, no, hold on, yeah, we changed no parking signs to 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. with the exclusion of Monday.
Tuesday through Sunday.
Tuesday through Sunday, Tuesday through Thursday, Tuesday through Sunday.
Tuesday through Sunday.
Thank you.
Perfect, in a second.
Second.
Super. Any other comments or questions for Mary? Hearing seeing none, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Metters.
Aye.
And the chair says aye as well, thank you very much, Mary, good job.
Great, thank you, thanks for your support, everyone.
Thank you, Corey. Okay, consider draft letter for support of the Upper Air Station relocation to Chatham Municipal Airport, there's a copy of the, of the letter in our package. Comments, suggestions, any edits? Favorable, unfavorable?
Mr. Chair, did you jump ahead on the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I?
FY 2022.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Alex, I, thank you, Ms. Davis. Alex, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a budget transfer request? Take it away, Alex.
Thank you, yes. This is the annual request prior to the cleanup warrant, which will be run this Friday, July 15th. As indicated in the packet, the town may during the first 15 years of the new fiscal ye, 15 years, 15 days of the new fiscal year, run the accounts payable warrant, it's known as the cleanup warrant. So we've collected all the invoices that we think will be needed for this warrant, and up to today, I was updating the year-end transfers, well, the year-end expenditures for the warrant, so in your packet, I've given you a list of what the transfers are needed and the invoices for the cleanup warrant. So the Finance Committee reviewed these transfers on July 6th and voted unanimously to approve the budget transfers as presented. And what we're requesting is requesting to transfer $343,055 from the employee benefits budget, and $140,000 from the debt services budget to the following budget categories, to the Department of Public Works into facilities, $477,000, and into the snow and ice, $5,110, and to the insurance budget, specifically the motor vehicle line item, $945. The reasons for this is listed in the agenda report, but again, facilities, which is part of the DPW, has a deficit due to the outsourcing of the custodial services for all of FY 2022. And while that did result in a savings in the salary line item, the expenses for cleaning all the town buildings exceeded the wage savings. Also included in this were emergency cleanings that contributed to the deficit for the line item, as well as some of the utility prices that increased over, in FY 2022, so that was more than budgeted by just over $68,000. There were other all smaller repair items, actually larger, that also contributed to the deficit, so that's the reasons for those. The source of funds, the funds remaining, which is probably more important, the health insurance contributing money to fund the deficit, the funds remain because there was, again, continued to be savings, mostly due to the premium holiday, where Cape Cod Municipal Health Group waived one month worth of premiums, both for the employees and the employer. So that's about $200,000 a month, so that is one of the reasons why we have money left over in the health insurance budget. And workers' compensation also on their employment benefits also had savings, less, due to less claims. And then the transfer of $140,000 from the debt service budget was available to our refunding of the general obligation bonds of 2012, which saved the town interest and principal payments in FY 2022 and beyond. And I'd like to remind the board and the taxpayers that that was savings of $1.4 million over the life of the bonds without extending the term of bonds. And in your packet, I noted that after the cleanup warrant is finalized, but before all the encumbrances, which, where people request money to be saved due to expense invoices not received before the end of the fiscal year, we were 98.26% expended, it's now up to 98.28% expended. So that is almost 100% expended for FY 2022. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the select board, Mr. Shell.
Just a technical question, on the facilities transfer, to the facilities, the number you read was 477 in our packet, it's 475. Did you mean to change that?
It should be 477, yes, I'm sorry about that. We were working on this all the time, right up to the time I included it in the packet.
Thank you. Mr. Castro.
Yes, so Alex, the recommendation numbers remain as printed, transfer of 343,055 from benefits and $140,000 from debt service, to transfer 482,110 to the DPW, and $945 to the insurance, those are the correct numbers?
Those are the correct numbers, it's a total transfer of $483,055.
Has, and these were the numbers that were approved by the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board vote to approve the transfer of, one, $343,055 from benefits budget and $140,000 from debt service, and the transfer, number two, of $482,110 to the DPW budget, DPW, and $945 to the insurance budget as recommended by the Finance Director.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shell. Okay, any more discussion? I see none, Mr. Castro, what say you?
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Shell.
Aye.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And the chair does say aye as well. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, I know I jumped ahead here, but now we can consider a draft letter of support for the Upper Air Station relocation to Chatham Municipal Airport. We did get a copy of the letter that we asked town manager to draft, and Jill, anything to say? Any questions or comments or edits or suggestions?
It was reviewed by Mr. Daniel and Huntley Harrison as well, and this is the draft that's presented for you tonight.
And they're okay with it?
Yes.
Thanks.
Everybody all set? Okay, all right. Okay, so I don't think we can move this ending, or we've already told we want to send it, so.
Actually, Mr. Chair, if you do have a vote, then I could acknowledge that there was a vote of, in my transmittal to the letter.
Super.
It's all moved.
Okay, thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay, well, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Metters.
Aye.
The chair says aye as well, thank you, it was a good job. Yep. And our last item of business is committee appointments and reappointments. First up is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, two members, member terms expiring June 30th, 2022, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Bruce Bean and Megan Story to the Affordable Housing